Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, November 15th, 2018 edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I get started, is anyone recording the meeting this evening? Hearing none, seeing none? If you have an electronic device with a ringer on it, could you please put it down to a silent mode, please? Thank you. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our seven o'clock applicant, Masad Family LLC requesting a special permit to allow an auto dealership vehicle storage lot within an aquifer zone three recharge area under section 4351, 4371 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 24 to 30 Faith Ave., Auburn, Mass., map 61, parcel 1963 and 65. Is the applicant present?
Representative Davis?
Could you approach the lectern, please, sir? Give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish and we'll turn it over to the board for questions. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, sir, before we get started today, we have a couple of absences and I want to let the whole audience here know also, we're going to be bringing our two alternate members up as full voting members this evening. So, they are still, again, as they are brought forward, competent, capable members to vote in favor or against all these applications, but if anybody feels as though they would rather wait and be heard at the next meeting, I want to give you all the option to do that when you come forward, okay?
My name is Zachary Gilles, I'm from Existing Grade Incorporated. I'm one of the engineers for the site representing Mr. Masad and the project. And as you said, the project is located at, what was, 24 to 30 Faith Avenue. It used to be three residential structures and the owner had purchased those lots with the intent of raising all the structures and creating a vehicle storage lot over there. And the lot is currently entirely within a zone three well recharge area. Some work has already been done, some of these houses have already been demolished, but a portion of this project is that, this is the old existing Faith Avenue up here. I know on the locust map might be a little easier to see, but you have the old existing Faith Avenue. This is the Diamond Chevrolet dealership and part of this project, the second portion of this project was to take Faith Avenue and relocate it. So, it's going to be kind of coming up right next to where these three residential structures were. The intent of the project, again, is to create 176 space vehicle storage lot and the lot is, it has wetlands along what will be the southern side of it. So, the whole lot, we upgraded it to drain north towards the old portion of Faith Avenue. All of this drainage is going to be captured within a storm scepter and then pushed into a big underground recharge area, and then from there outlet into a forbay and a pond. And the outlet of that pond, this has been kind of going back and forth a little bit, but the outlet of the pond, we're going to be pushing way east of the site over towards where the on-ramp of 290, there's a pipeline replication going on over there as part of that relocation of all the work that's been going on on the other side of the site. So, the discharge for that pond will be pushing over into that area. You know, again, the parking lot, we are going for a couple landscape waivers mainly along the frontage, but we are proposing some perimeter landscaping. Over here is the church, Faith Avenue Church, and then again on this side is the new roadways, the existing dealership. Some other, little quick portions of this project are is that we're going to be providing employee access across the new Faith Avenue so that the employees can get into this lot. And there's going to be just one entrance and exit over here. That's all gone before the fire department. This whole project's gone before peer review to Graves Engineering and they're on board with all of these changes that we've made, as well as the planning board and conservation as well. We've been through them and they're content with everything we're proposing to do. Again, this is just a quick outlet plan showing the drainage. What we're proposing to do, again, with the pond is we're going to have an outlet control structure here. Pipe is going to go all the way to the east. I know it might be kind of difficult to see from up there, but the pond is, the pipe is going to come along existing drain line. We're going to tap in through a couple drain manholes, some new ones, and discharge it into a area that's been going on over there. Side of things, just a quick lighting plan showing that we're not going over any of the property lines with the lighting for the parking lot. General details for the site. Just kind of a quick summary of where we're at. I don't know if anybody has any quick cursory questions.
Okay, we're going to go around the horn. Mr. Cussing?
You said Graves already reviewed all this?
Yes, this has gone before Graves. We had an initial design that went for their review. We did a whole bunch of changes to our original design and then it's gone before them two more times. So, this, just recently, they've had a quick cursory review and they were fine with this design as it stands here.
Okay, Mr. Chacolo?
Hi. Did I hear you say this is gone or going out for peer review?
It is already gone for peer review because we've gone before the planning board a few times already on this project and part of all that was, again, to go for peer review. So, they, Graves Engineering has looked at this project a few times and we've taken their comments and addressed all of their concerns.
Ms. Please?
I don't really have any good, are there any abutters here that would just like to speak?
Do we have any abutters present this evening? Okay, we'll give you an opportunity in a minute, sir.
So, yeah, I'll hold comment until I hear from any abutter.
Mr. Jones?
I have no questions for him.
Okay, so we're going to allow the abutter to speak, please. If you want to go up to the microphone, sir, introduce yourself.
I'm going to make a live.
No, you have to come up to the microphone, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, this is for the first hearing for Faith Ave. Yeah, I'm here for the 7:10.
Okay, yeah, no, that's okay. We got started a little bit late this evening.
Okay.
Okay, my only real question is, so where Faith Ave intersects with Route 20, obviously that's not going to change, correct?
Correct.
Maintain that same state curb cut?
Yes, right. Yeah, we're not doing any revisions to any of the new layout for Faith Avenue. Everything that's already been approved where that all remains as is.
Okay. Any further questions, ladies and gentlemen? No?
Caleb, do you have any?
Caleb, do you have any input?
I would just say that they, they have gone, the applicant, it's gone through extensive peer review and the planning board's looking at everything. The only reason they're coming to us after the fact is it was kind of a miscommunication. They weren't aware that they needed the special permit for the aquifer zone, but it has been extensively reviewed by all departments as well as a peer review.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? A motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion on the seven o'clock application?
Link, a motion to grant.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Proof? And approved.
If I may.
Hold on one second, I'm sorry.
Just recommend standard conditions.
Yes, I saw, what are the standard conditions that usually apply to these types of applications? Okay, good luck, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we'll give them a chance to clear out. We're at 11 past 7:00, so he'll be wanting the next hearing. If you'd like to take a minute and set up before we get started, that's fine. So, before we get started too, I have to add that since we are short a couple of members, in the event that one member that on the board decides to vote against any of the hearings this evening, we are required to have a super majority this evening. So, that means all the members have to approve. No?
Four out of five. Four out of five.
Four out of five, all right. Well, I take that back, I stand corrected. Okay, so we can go ahead and begin. The 710 applicant, ZPT Energy Solutions 2 LLC requesting a special permit to allow the installation and use of a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility under section 3240 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 1 Henshaw Street, Auburn, Mass., map 21, parcel 14. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Sir, if you'd just give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish, please?
Certainly, yes. I'll go through and give an overview of the project and our company and then I'll turn it over to Chris Ryan from Meridian Associates who's our engineer. My name is Barry Sculchi. I'm a principal with ZPT Energy Solutions and first I want to thank you all for coming out. I know the weather is suspect out there and so I do, we do appreciate that. ZPT, we are a solar developer, but we actually go beyond that and that really differentiates our company from other solar entities. We also construct the system and we do the operations and maintenance as well and sometimes we even own the asset long-term. So, either way, we're with the project for a long period of time, which I think is a real important differentiator. We're proposing a three-megawatt project on the property located off Lester Street. We've appeared before conservation and we are going to be before them again on December 12th. This past week, we were before planning and testified there. The project is being peer reviewed or has been peer reviewed by Burton Engineering. We've received their comments and we will be responding. The comments were both Burton and ourselves felt were quite minor, so we'll be working on that response. We've also engaged a town engineer and he's going to be providing us some input as well and we'll respond to that. Another thing that we've done is we have engaged the abutters. Besides the notification that they are required to receive, we sent a personal letter to them. We spoke to several on the phone before the meetings and then at both conservation and planning, we engaged them and spoke to them. So, that's part of the culture in our company that we want, we're a good neighbor, we're a local company, we're based in Worcester and so, you know, we want to do our part to have a successful project. With that, Chris, when I turn it over to you to give some of the details of the project, okay?
My name is Christopher Ryan, I'm with Meridian Associates. We are based in Beverly, Massachusetts and we are the site engineers for the project. As Barry recently said, we've already appeared for the first time in front of the Conservation Commission. This past Tuesday, planning and the project is in the process of being peer reviewed. The property is located on, technically located on 1 Henshaw Street. It's assessed as map 21, lot 14. The parcel itself encompasses approximately 61 acres in total. We are proposing to the total area, the total net area of trees that would be disturbed is approximately 18.75 acres for the project. I'm just going to briefly show you through the existing conditions plan and then sort of transition as to what we're proposing. So, the property, as you can see, it's sort of a hilltop property. Lester Street is down here. Elevation works its way up to the top. There are a few existing open field areas on site at the top of the hill, which approximately seven acres of sort of a field habitat. This is the right of way coming up from Henshaw Street and Lester Street is down here to the south, at least on this plan, to the south. So, what we're proposing to do is for the array, actually, let me fix this. We're proposing to enter off of Lester Street here with a gravel driveway. Maximum slope 10% is requested by the fire department. Would basically switch back all the way up to the top. At the top of the hill, we'd view the fenced-in array area with associated equipment pads, access box for the fire department and stormwater. So, what we're proposing for stormwater is on the plans, you'll be able to see, there's a series of surface infiltration basins and that's, there's a few waivers that we've requested through the planning board and one of them was to be able to use surface infiltration basins versus subsurface because we're not really proposing impervious area, the only impervious areas on the site being proposed have to do with the equipment pads. So, in order to maintain the existing drainage patterns and in order to deal with the difference in stormwater runoff after construction, we've created six infiltration basins around the site. Two up in here, up in the north here, you'll see abutting is one area of bordering vegetated wetlands. We've got two more on the southern side here. And then also, as you walk, as you work your way down, the driveway is another two. As you work your way down to handle any runoff and control the rates as well, as well as volumes. The, after the, after the array is built or during the different phases of construction, the area that would have trees cleared would be replanted to be a meadow habitat and that, it's a hardy wild New England conservation wildlife mix that's usually planted here inside the limits of the array. That's what would be planted a lot of times generally, and generally outside the array, it's sort of going to be, depending on the area, the site would be selective tree removal and leaving some of the existing underbrush landscape there. The soils on site varied from a B and C-class soils, so we've had to construct the basins accordingly in order to, so that we, we're not increasing the, any runoff off-site either to the neighbors' homes on Lester Street here and also down to the backside to the north on the other side of the site. So, essentially, that's what the stormwater system is. It's just going to be a series of infiltration basins, surface basins, that'll have outlets that will control the rate and volume of runoff into different areas of the property, also while providing groundwater recharge in those locations. The perimeter fence of the array is going to be raised up six inches off the ground. This allows small animals to traverse the property to help promote the, it's going to be a meadow habitat when it's all said and done. As Barry said, it's going to be a three-megawatt system. There'll be, I believe, battery storage, battery storage on site. And once the construction's done, a system like this doesn't really produce any sort of noise or sound pollution or any kind of pollution really, it's just sitting there quietly generating energy. That's pretty much the extent of what we're proposing. So, if anybody had any questions regarding the drainage system or just the site layout or access or anything like that, I'd be happy to have an answer.
I noticed that we had an abutter present that would like to speak, so I'm going to give them the opportunity first and I'll turn it over to the members of the board.
Sure.
Sir, if you'd like to speak?
I have nothing to say at this moment.
I'm sorry?
I have nothing to say at this moment.
Okay. Mr. Cussing, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so there's seven acres of pasture up there now. So, and you're going to go 18 acres?
The, the total area of disturbance for the project is going to be 25.8 acres, but that's including, if you factor in the existing seven acres, that's already had all the trees cut down or it's been used as a pasture or field for years. Sort of the net tree removal area would be approximately 18.75 acres.
Yeah, the panels will take maybe 12 acres.
And how long will this project take to construct?
Probably, I would say about a four to six month duration.
And when were you planning on starting?
Right now, I would say that we're, we prefer to start, I'd say mid to end of second quarter next year.
No more questions?
Mr. Chacolo?
Yes, I have one and it'll probably involve some input from Caleb. The recently passed bylaws we passed at town meeting, the extensive one regarding solar How does that dovetail in with this project?
Although the vote was passed at town meeting, that would not apply to this project. Does this project?
Would not affect anything with this project?
That can't be, you can't, you can't take that bylaw and put it onto this project when it came in before that.
Just wondering how it would dovetail in. That has to be.
The application was received prior to that vote and the Attorney General hasn't approved that as of yet.
All right. That's all I have for now and I would like to hear the abutter.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say I like how your packet was put together, it was very, very easy to follow.
Thank you.
Ms. Please?
I just have a question of who owns the land? Are you going to be renting it, leasing it? A different person owns the land, correct?
That is right. We are, we are, we will be entered into a grounds.
Okay.
It will be a base 20-year term with, I believe, there are three, five-year options. The useful life of the equipment is 30 to 40 years. Actually, reality probably extends beyond that. That's how this is going to be structured.
So, you're in agreement to do a 20-year lease at this point from the owners?
Yes, with a, with the appropriate option.
Okay, that's all I have for right now, thank you.
And I noticed at the beginning of your presentation, you had mentioned that for the most part, you retain the, and maintain the facility yourself, but I take it that you do sell some?
Yes, we, we do, yes. Even the ones that we do sell, we, our, my company does the operation and maintenance. So, we're involved with the system for the long term and again, we feel that's a benefit to the community and to the town because it's, you know, there is an unforeseen issue.
Okay. The abutter, would you like to bring in anything forward now?
My main concern is.
You have to approach the microphone, please, sir. Introduce yourself, give us your name and address and tell us your concerns.
Nikolai Mazaluk from 447 Lester Street. My main concerns is the runoff of water coming into my property. One of the basins is right behind my, my home and if you're familiar with the area, there is a big embankment up in that area and I'm just concerned if it's not drained properly, that will eventually maybe get some flooding into my house in the future. Some other concerns of mine are things that will affect me is my privacy. I really like having my privacy, that's one big reason why I moved into that area. And also, just the wildlife, having the trails in the backyard to go hiking and just enjoy the woods. Ultimately, I would rather not have those solar panels right behind my house. I think it also will affect my property value as time goes on if I do want to sell because I think it would be the interest of somebody to have woods behind their house instead of solar panels. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, if you'd go on and address some of those concerns?
Sir, yes. And I probably won't take them in the exact order, but with respect to the wildlife, the, only the array is going to be fenced in. The remainder of the property, which is the majority of the property, is going to remain as is and I don't see why wildlife would not be able to traverse it the way that it has. Secondly, as Chris alluded to, the fence is constructed so that there's actually a gap between the ground surface and the, and the bottom of the fence so that the smaller animals can traverse in and out. So, you know, I would suggest that whatever wildlife is there will continue to be there. The second comment with respect to stormwater, Burton Engineering, that's, that's their job, they're looking at the stormwater and they are, we have some comments that we're going to be addressing from their, the report they've provided us. The work that we're doing frankly is going to make stormwater conditions better. I mean, that, that's the requirement that we can't have an increase in flow, we can't have an increase in the stormwater. So, the basins that we're constructing and the work that we're doing is, is going to improve the, the condition and the volume. But again, there's a peer review engineer who's very competent and that's, that's their focus and that's what we're going to work with them on to ensure that everything done is properly. Also with respect to groundwater, again, we're doing the operations and maintenance. If there's an issue, it's my responsibility. I'm an owner in the company. If, God forbid, there was an issue that developed, we don't expect that that's going to occur, it's our responsibility to fix it, plain and simple. What else would I say? Property values, I'm not, I'm not a real estate appraisal, appraiser. I don't think that it would be proper for me to comment on that. All I will say is that solar facilities are, have been constructed throughout, up and down the east coast, on the west coast, and they continue to be. And, you know, I, I have my own personal opinion, but again, I'm not an appraiser, so I don't think I'm really qualified to answer that. I think that is it. Was there anything else that I missed?
Those are all the ones. Did he adequately address your concerns, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Yeah. How close does this abut his property?
The setbacks are.
Panels themselves.
The panels themselves?
Yeah.
Not the, the disturbance, just.
The panels themselves are approximately about a, just from my best gauge here, approximately at the closest point about 150 to 180 feet away from the property lines of the residential abutters along Lester Street.
And around the panels, what's going to be, is it staying grass after?
Yes. Yeah, basically, a lot of times on the, what we'll do is on this one, on all of them actually, around the perimeter, there's a sort of a, just an area to allow for the maintenance vehicles. Once the system is built, about a couple times a year, there'll be a maintenance crew that's coming in to check on things and also to do landscaping. The meadow grass is maintained at a certain height, so it just doesn't grow out of control and actually obstruct the bottom edges of the panel. So, there'll be a vehicle, vehicle or two in there a few times a year to do maintenance to inspect the stormwater controls and make sure that everything's functioning properly. But to answer your question, yes, we have it now as a grassed access way around the perimeter. Obviously, if the, that could change depending on what the fire department requires, it's different in every town, but nine times out of 10, the grass perimeter is what they have.
We've constructed approximately 50 of these projects over the last five years in Massachusetts and predominantly it's a grass cover that remains. The last item is privacy. I remembered, I'm sorry. First of all, the system doesn't operate at night. Sun goes down, system goes off. Chris mentioned, the operation and maintenance is very limited. Couple times a year, they'll be checking wires, they'll be cutting the grass, checking stormwater controls. There's no daily maintenance or really any, anything to speak over at high frequencies. These systems don't have moving parts. They basically just operate for the duration. Yes, and the other thing, Chris, just reminded me, is that the system is remotely monitored so that, you know, we only go out if there's, besides our routine and very frequent visits, if there's an issue. So, that is monitored on a 24/7 basis on the production.
Okay.
And this road will be maintained all the time?
Yes.
Loud and accessible?
Absolutely, and there's going to be gates, there's going to be two gates, you know, some of the plants, to, to prevent unoverused access.
Yes, the abutter mentioned that he was concerned about water runoff. Could you address that?
Yeah, you want?
If you could address soil type at the same time, that would be helpful.
Address what at the same time?
Soil type.
Oh, yeah, sorry. So, like I said, it's, the soils on site were mainly B-class and C-class soils, either sandy loams or loamy sands. So, they have different infiltration rates, so we had to size the basins accordingly. If you have a lower infiltration rate, a lot of times you have to retain more and allow for more infiltration area to, to meet the peak rates and runoffs at certain areas around the property. So, that's what we've done here. The two ponds on the entry road were in the better area of soil, so we were able to size those to accommodate more and to knock down the peak rates and volumes of all the water coming down towards Lester Street. There is a, there is a basin proposed in the area behind these three abutting homes. So, that's, that particular one where we designed it so that any sort of water outletting goes into a very, very long level spreader to sort of dissipate the flow into, to more recreate a sheet flow, which would normally be occurring when you have water running down a hillside like that. So, that, in addition to the infiltration capacity that we're proposing, will be able to reduce the rates of flow in the 210 and 100-year design storms as designed by, I think probably your local regs as well as DEP. Does that answer your question there?
Who's the fourth water?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The smaller basin.
Which, which one?
The smaller basin, the one you referred to. Over here? That's your problem, correct?
Oh, yeah, same thing. The small, the smaller basin is sized, it's a smaller area that actually flows towards that and the, we have the outlet facing away from the property. So, any, any of the runoff that comes. So any of the runoff that comes out is directed away so that it's not exactly, it's not coming down directly back at his property. But that's part of sort of the review that we're going through with the peer engineers. They had some comments and questions about these basins that we're going to be addressing with them, the shape, size of them, location on the hill may slightly move or change in order to satisfy their, any concerns they may have in terms of their design.
Does that address the abutters' concerns sufficiently?
At the moment, yes.
Sir, you want to abutter also?
Yes.
Would you like to make a comment, please?
Hi, Tom Shannon, 460 Lester Street. Just my understanding is the lots of sixty-one acre area and the controlling interest is twenty-seven acres. Is the green area that the twenty-seven acres, or you control more than that?
No, I'm sorry, the rendering is just to show just sort of the general area up to the wetlands that's going to be disturbed, the total disturbance. What they end up having is a lease area will encompass the areas that they've had to actively maintain.
Right, but is that just the green area? It's not...
Yeah, for the most part. Anything basically inside the fence that surrounds the array and the stormwater measures and the...
You hear that? Wrong? He, he just addressed the microphone, please, sir.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Basically, he was just asking what part of the property will be under the control of the solar lease entity. And I just explained to him that basically, it's basically what's rendered here. There's a lease area plan that'll be created, and that'll be the area of the property that they will be responsible for maintaining. And generally, it includes the area of disturbance for the most part, and encompasses the array and the stormwater measures and the entry road, and anything that needs to be maintained will be included in the lease area.
Okay. Any other further questions?
I'm good.
Mr. Chokol?
Another question?
I have none.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Hi, Nikolai again from 447 Lester Street. It was mentioned that the solar panels would be overviewed from a remote place, so would they be viewed by cameras remotely? And if so, are those cameras stationary or are they able to be, are they motion cameras that they would be able to move or whatnot?
There, we, what we do is, there are no cameras on the property. We monitor the system through just remote monitoring of the production of the system. So there are sensors at various spots that transmit the data wirelessly, and we have a remote, an area where we monitor all the systems. But there's no cameras, there's no motion sensors, nothing, all of those lines.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Anything else? Okay. On this side? Okay. A motion to close the public hearing. Public portion of the hearing, excuse me.
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? No? All right, so I have a motion on the seven-ten applicant, ZPT Energy Solutions Two LLC.
I'll make a motion to grant.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed, pending peer review and all that, all the standards.
Okay, well, it passes, but I mean, symbolically, I'm going to vote to deny, but it really doesn't make a difference, so congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to the next application.
It's not yet a buzzer. Can I ask you about that one? Oh, yes.
... The septum, the plant's...
It's a tough one.
I'll be right out.
She come behind my house. Three of them last week, three day behind us. There's a safety benefit to permitting. Just stay in there and watch. Eat and wean.
There's no any transition. Fundamental concepts and smart zoning. Bridge it mostly abroad. The homes. Hundred fifty feet back.
Okay, we have the seven-twenty PM applicant, Gerard and Mary Lou DeLongshamp, requesting a variance of three feet to allow an addition of a farmer's porch forty feet by eight feet under section 5.4 Dimensional Table of the zoning bylaws on properly located eighteen Glenview Road, Auburn, Mass. Map nineteen parcel one oh three is the applicant present. Good evening. Good evening, sir. One second, please. Could I have a motion open the hearing?
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If you could give us an overview of what you'd like to try to accomplish, please, sir?
Thank you. So my name is Jerry DeLongshamp, this is my wife, Mary Lou. We reside at eighteen Glenview Road in Auburn. We've been residents of Auburn since 1971, homeowners since 1974, at our present residence. We are here this evening to request a variance in order to construct a farmer's porch, the full length of our, of our home, which is forty feet, with a width of eight feet. We are short, I guess, for the front setback by about three feet. It's actually two point five, two point six feet. We, I believe you have some letters that our abutters have signed. I also provided you some photos of our residence. And this evening, I believe you received a more accurate design of the project, which I just received earlier this afternoon. If you have any questions.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Cusi, do you have any questions of the applicant?
I don't right now.
Okay. Mr. Chokol?
Yes. You understand that to grant you a variance, there have to be three specific criteria. First criteria, which is really the door to open to the other criteria, is that there be a specific problem or issue with the topology that would allow us to grant you the variance. The other two criteria would be that you would be doing harm to the, harm to the neighbors, and it would be detrimental to the town, which we don't even get to those if we, if we can't get by the topology question. So what I would ask of you, is there any specific issue with the topology that would allow you? And one of the issues might be, just as an example, if there were ledge in a certain area, that would mean that you have to position something in an area that would not be approved. But the ledge would create the issue with the type of topology that would allow us to say, yes, you can, you can move what you have to move to a certain area. If there was a huge grade that would, you would have to get by. Anything that would allow us to say, okay, we've got through the first door. Can you give me anything?
I am not aware of any topology issues, to be honest with you.
So...
Am I not answering this question?
No, no, I'd, I'd love to hear you give me one. I would be thrilled if you could.
So if I could just maybe try to clarify what Mr. Chokol is trying to get at. So we have to have a certain criteria met in order to grant a variance. And I'm going to read them directly so you'll know what they are. So the mandatory, this is pretty specific, mandatory findings, before the grant of any variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the Board of Appeals must specifically find that. So you have one, owing to conditions relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. And then two, that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. So we need something from one that relates to the shape of the lot, topography of the land, the soil condition or a structure, and then we need to be able to demonstrate that it does not, by granting a desirable relief, we're not really providing a detriment to the public good. I think two is fairly easy because you have, you know, several signed letters from your abutters that don't have a problem. We need to try to clarify one if we can.
I'm still having some difficulty understanding number one, to be honest with you.
So it has to, the project has to be approved for a variance by showing that there is some type of hardship that you are going to relieve by doing this.
Well, the farmer's porch is really for our family needs. We, if we're going to construct the porch, we'd like to have it at least eight feet wide. Anything shorter than that, we don't really feel as though it would, it would meet our needs for the, for the cost of the project.
Would it be handicap accessible?
It would be handicap accessible. There, we have some, there are some medical issues, which I'd rather not discuss in public, that would certainly benefit by having this farmer's porch.
Okay.
Can, can we, is there any way to relate anything that you want to do with the porch, the three feet that you want relief from, two point five feet that you want relief from? Is there any way we can relate that to the topography of your lot?
Well, you know, not knowing the future, there could be a situation where we may need a handicap ramp, or they may be in need for wheelchair accessible, and we just felt...
You've got to relate that to the topography of your lot for me. In other words, if the topography of your lot would prevent, okay, a five foot, okay, you would necessarily have to have eight foot, and I could, I could make an argument for you in that case, okay? Then we could, and you could relate that to the topography of your lot. There's a way to get to the second door and understand that this is mandated by the state. Any decision that we make has to be supported, we have to be able to support that decision to the State of Massachusetts Superior Court. So that, that's why I'm pressing you to give me anything that you can relating to the topography of that lot, such as, like I said, if there was ledge there, if you had a steep embankment, that you were going to do some, if there was a, in your case, I'm not sure, but there are, there are many different things that we have heard here at the zoning board. But they need to relate to the topography, the topology that causes you not to be able to adhere to the law, the zoning law.
And again, at this point, I'm not sure if I can, if I can answer your question accurately. I, this is the first, I'm made aware of this, this criteria this evening, and I'm not prepared to address it to the point where it would be satisfactory to the board.
Would, what is the timeline on this project, sir, if I don't mind me asking?
Well, we, not knowing, our intent back in the fall, we thought that it'd be, you know, coming to the, to the, to the board and just asking for variance, and I took out the old tape measure, and I thought we met the criteria, and was not aware of everything else that went along with it. So the company that we have hired apparently works during the winter months. It's going to include replacing the roof, tying in the farmer's porch to our existing deck, replacing a couple of windows. So they are looking to start work possibly in December, weather permitting.
Mr. Cusi, do you have any questions?
Are there any other abutters?
Are there any abutters present? None.
I like the porch, to tell you the truth.
I love it. I do as well, I love it. And quite honestly, I don't see with that large tree in the front yard...
There's two.
Right.
Two large trees in the front yard. Yes. Caleb, do you have any input on this, any way of...
Unfortunately, the setback is what it is. The bylaw says that if it was an uncovered handicap ramp, then it can encroach on the setback. But a farmer's porch with a roof, unfortunately, a setback is what it is.
And a five foot wide farmer's porch wouldn't necessarily be a safe thing either, right?
I don't know that someone would spend the money for, for a five foot porch.
Right, that's what I mean.
You're not going to get a lot of use out of it.
Right.
Has, let me ask a question, maybe Caleb knows. Has that road through paving, repaving, whatever, ever that you know of been changed at all so that the distance from the house to the road at its closest point would have changed in any way, even a foot?
No, the setback is to the property line, so it's not to the pavement. Very seldom are the roads paved to the full right of way.
I'm stretching, you can tell.
Any other input? So you see, I think the board would like to help you. I don't think there's any question about that. I think what we have to do is figure out a way to get through the first barrier in order to open the door for the second part. My suggestion to you would be, and if you're willing to do so, is to request a continuance until the next meeting. Try to do some homework, figure out a way that will meet the criteria of the variance now that you've been introduced to the language, and then we can make a decision at the December meeting for you.
I'll do that.
Okay, so you'll have to formally request a continuance, if you could, please.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so he's, are you requesting a continuance?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Do we make a motion to grant a continuance?
Motion to grant a continuance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we will put you on the agenda for the December meeting. If you'd like during the week, you could either go to Auburn Guide online, or you can see Caleb. We can make you a copy of this page. You can see what the criteria is. It's actually in page eighty-seven. It's nine point five point five. Those will give you the standards for meeting the criteria for a variance, and then we'll see you in December.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so 7:30, we are at?
Yep.
Eight o'clock? Drink for a minute? All right, so Caleb is going to excuse himself for a minute. He's going to go get him the documentation they need for that, so we can start the next one. So our final applicant tonight is Jose Fernandez, requesting a special permit for a home occupation office under section 3912, accessory use of the zoning bylaws on property located at 6 Oakwood Ave, Auburn, Mass., map 11, parcel 84. The motion to open the hearing.
Motion open?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the applicant present?
Yes.
Hi, if you could just give us an overview of what they'd like to accomplish. Tell us what's going on, we'll ask you some questions and go from there.
As you know, my name is Jose Fernandez. I was, I've lived here since 2004, 2005. My father is here as president also. So what I'm looking to do is be granted a wholesale dealership license, just so I could wholesale vehicles, auction to auction, is what I'm looking for. So, you know, my father and I, we'd be going to an auction, bidding on a vehicle, and potentially transporting it to another auction to sell it there. So I'd be requesting, you know, to use my home address as the, as our office, basically, for the license.
Okay. Mr. Cussie, any questions?
Yeah, are you going to be bringing cars to this location?
To our home, no. Just the ones that I would use to, you know, go around or to commute around. So basically, my car, my own car.
So this is just going to be basically an office?
Yes, sir.
I'm good for now.
Okay, Mr. Chacolo?
Your, your request here is for a wholesale auto dealership license. We cannot grant you a dealership license. This is, you would have to get that from the selectmen. Like, a dealership license. If you're asking for an office in your home, that's a different story.
Well, that's, yeah, if you see here, I think the language on the, our schedule.
Right, and I'm looking at his other application. And hearing what he said, he wanted a wholesale dealership license. Which is it?
The wholesale license, you know, for our office, you know, just to have it.
You want an office, that's all?
Yeah, just to use it, just to use the home address as an office.
You already have a license?
No, I wanted to get approved by the board.
Right, so in a sense, if we grant what the applicant wants, that address would be used as the basis for a dealership license.
Correct, I agree. So I think the wording on the application is incorrect for our purposes?
For our purposes, yes. But that would be the address that you would be presenting to the selectmen for an auto dealership license.
I think, so what he's trying to explain to you is, so the application you submitted to the town,
Right.
where it says to permit the following uses or structures, you wrote wholesale auto dealership license. We are not the granting authority for that. So the application is wrong just for that. Not that we're trying to say we can't give it to you, we just don't have the authority to grant you a dealership license. What the application should say, it should be amended to say, you know, home office.
Okay.
Basically, is all it really needs to say. Because we, if we granted you this, it would might, to some people, infer that we accidentally actually gave you a wholesale auto dealership license. So with that being said, would Caleb, would you be opposed to amending this application orally right now? Is that something we can do?
Through the chair, the advertisement in the posting says, "Requesting a special permit for a home occupation office under 3912."
Right, okay. But I just want to make sure we're clear with the language difference between the written submitted application and what is on the posting.
Yeah, I don't know if the applicant is confused by what he's gaining here tonight, but I think this is the first step in him getting his license from the board.
I just want to make sure everyone's clear, people at home are clear, we're clear. So if we grant tonight, just for instance, if we do, that means you have an application that was agreed to have, you have a home office in your residence?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for clarifying.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, the board does have the ability to condition any approval as they see fit.
Absolutely.
Now, you're going to be taking cars from an auction and just essentially reselling them?
Yes, sir.
Where do you store them? Where are you going to store them?
Well, they'll be, they'll, we'll hire a transportation company to bring it to another auction, so not us, you know, us ourselves doing that. So it would be just, it would be at the auction, basically, the vehicle, still.
You go down to Connecticut, you buy five cars. You have to get them out of there. You haven't got them sold yet, where are you putting them?
They'll be stored at the auction.
You have to get them out of there, where are you putting them?
At the other auction where we sell them.
At the other auction?
Yeah.
So that you're going to, there'll be no cars at any time parked on the street?
No, sir, not at all.
Or in your yard?
No, not at all.
Or in the yard at Oakwood Ave?
No, not at all.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Do we have any abutters present? Would you like to address, sir? If you could approach the microphone and introduce yourself?
John Shea, 8 Oakwood Ave. I live right next door to the Fernandez. I think we've been neighbors now for, what, 15, 16 years, something like that? I understand what he's trying to do. He wants to get himself a home office so he can get his permits and that for his wholesale business. I look at it this way. He's taken the first legal step to come in front of you people to try to get the variance for the home office. As long as it's going to be a clean operation, we're not going to have an overburden of cars on the street and an overburden of traffic on the street because it's a very quiet little residential neighborhood of which, we're going through a changeover over there right now where the old timers like myself are starting to move out. And younger families are coming in. And it's starting to be like, when I first moved over there 48 years ago, there's a lot of small children on the street now. So we want to keep the traffic down. I'll go back to say what I just said. He's taken the first legal step to come before you people. As long as everything goes within the town limits, in the town inspectional services, and everything meets code, I don't have a problem.
Okay. So we put some certain conditions on it, such as, you know, no cars from the auction site to the property, different things like that? That would be satisfactory to you?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
The law does state that the business would be conducted entirely within the dwelling unit. So he would not be conducting business in the driveway or in the yard or on the curb.
Please.
Does, will you have any employees coming in and out?
I'll, it should be basically me and my father.
You both live there now?
Yeah, we both live there.
Okay, so you're not going to hire a secretary or anybody to come in during the day?
No, 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 no.
Okay, thank you.
No signage or anything?
No, because there will be really no, there will be no vehicles there. It's just for me to use it as my home address. And I apologize, I didn't explain that well enough on the application.
No, that's okay, this is just the vetting process we go through usually with applicants.
Do you currently have a dealer's license?
No.
You don't have a dealer's license? This will be the address you use for your dealership, though?
For that, for the license, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Still makes me nervous.
Can I clarify anything for you, so?
Sure, if you want.
I mean, I don't know what kind of gives you the nerve, you know.
There, there's a whole bunch of different things that could happen. You could have licensed and registered if you have two plates. Okay, you get a dealer's license with two plates. You have, if you're married, you have a regular, a car that's licensed and registered to the State of Massachusetts. If you've got two plates, that allows you to put three vehicles in your driveway. Your driveway is pretty small.
That's right, yeah. Like I said, I don't plan to really use it for any sort of other different things besides just selling to the auction. You know, that's what my main goal is. I don't want to store vehicles at my house. I'm not, I think I'd be losing money that way if I just to leave the vehicles there. I mean, I don't want to store anything at my house. I live there, I want to be able to, you know, go in and out comfortably and whatnot.
Hey, I got another scenario for you, and that is that you buy a car at auction and you realize that it would be a good retail piece. And you have a neighbor, a friend, or a person you know you could retail that car to. You put your dealer's plate on it, you drive it home. Now you've got somebody coming to the house that wants to take it around the corner for a test drive because you can make a lot more money retail, okay? That scenario would bother me.
I understand, I wouldn't market it to the public. And if they did come towards me, I would give them the reason what I'm doing so that way they don't really kind of push that on me.
And you're not going to market to the public, but the public says, hey, I saw a car in the driveway that you drove home from the auction. Or they go to the auction with you. I've done it, I've gone to the auction with somebody and say, hey, buy that car for me. Okay, you buy it, you come home. Now you've got your business office in the home.
Right.
You're actually running, at that point, you're actually running a retail business from your home.
Right, I mean, at that, I've...
And that's done hundreds of times a day.
Right, I mean, at that point, I'd just be, I'd have my own car, so I wouldn't really use the cars from the auction because I would, I still have my own registered vehicle, so I don't plan to, you know, use the cars from the auction anyways to, you know, be stored at my home. And like I said, I would give them the nature of my business. You know, I could possibly tell them to go to, you know, another dealership if that's what they're looking for. There's probably a lot more of those vehicles around.
It's going to be awfully hard for you to turn down the profit from a wholesale-to-retail operation. So that if I go to the auction with you and say, buy me that car, you're going to buy the car, you're going to put your dealer's plate on it, you're going to bring it home? We're going to be conducting a retail business from your home.
I mean, that's not my intent to be, I mean, I didn't really ever think about that, actually. You know, I'd never thought about...
There's a saying about the road to hell being paved with good intentions.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's not my intention overall. I mean, I don't want to, I just want to, you know, work my full-time job and be able to do this just so I can continue to live forward.
Now, you've just said something, you work your full-time job?
Yeah, right now, I'm working a full-time job.
Will this become your full-time job?
That's what I'm hoping for, yes.
Would the wholesale license permit this kind of retail activity?
I don't believe so.
There's going to be no difference between a retail or wholesale license.
This is not something that we can really vet too far into because he still has to go through several other processes. This is if we're willing to give him a home office use.
Give him a home office use?
He's still going to have to go before the DCG?
Yes, he's got to go before, he's got to go before the selectmen
Right.
to get a dealership license. No difference between the two.
And for the special permit, it says you can't have any stored cars unless they're indoor.
Right, right, yeah. You can caveat that.
He'll be filling his driveway up, and if a neighbor were to complain...
Through the chair, if I may. The board does have the ability to put a timestamp on the special permit. You could require the applicant to appear before the board in a year with notification to abutters, so if there were issues, the board would learn about them at that time. Home occupation does say no retail sales, no employees other than residents.
That's already covered in the bylaw.
So there are, there are ways to safeguard the special permit.
Come back each year for a special permit?
If that's what the board chose to do, it could have a...
That makes me feel comfortable.
Could have a one-year, I mean, in one year, if there's no issues, you could extend it to...
So annual review?
It's, the board has that ability to put a time on the...
Feel comfortable, thank you, Caleb.
Okay, any further questions?
No.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
You may have answered this already, but the entire footprint of the business would be contained within the residence, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll be using at our home, you know, like I said, our home office address only.
So it wouldn't extend to the front stoop, the driveway, the yard?
No, no, not at all.
Thank you.
Anything further?
Nope.
Okay.
You got a question?
Yes, please, sir. Approach the microphone, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jose Fernandez, I'm Jose Luis's father. I'm a used car dealer, okay? Just in case, if he buys a car at the auction, the car need to be fixed, we can take it to our facility on Route 20, okay? We got the garage. Before taking it to the auction, if the car need to be fixed, we can take over there on Route 20. 156 West Cut Off is Metro West Auto Sales.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He wants to get his own, okay? And his car going to auction to auction. If his car need to be fixed, he can take it to 156 West Cut Off we got over there garage, and then he can take it to the auction.
So can I just ask a question?
Sure.
If we grant him this particular home office permit, can he just go right on your license and go to the auction?
Can you say?
Can you add him to your license?
No, because I already got partnered with him, you know? He's want to, he want to get his own business, you know?
Okay, I just want to make, I just want to understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And he's a car, and also we got a couple, auto body shop in Uster. If the car need to be, for example, take some, need to do some bodywork, he can take to Franklin Auto Sales, and then after go to the auction. On my driveway, I packing my car with a dealer plate, you know? We got two dealer plate, you know? And my partner use one, and I use one my dealer plate, okay?
Okay.
We got like his car, my car, and my wife's car, three cars. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what was the name of that, his business, the father's business?
Who's that?
Oh, Metro West Auto Sales.
Right, Metro West Auto Sales, on Route 20, Southwood Cut Off. All right, so do I have any ails? Motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Motion to close the public portion of the hearing. If everybody has spoken.
All right, so before we discuss anything to do with any conditions, do I have a motion on the 7:30 PM applicant?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Cussie, you in favor?
Yes, great.
Mr. Chacolo?
Grant.
Okay, I also grant, so the conditions will be as follows. Please feel free.
The time limit with an annual review, I feel much more comfortable with that. And the office is going to be inside, so time of day, if anything, doesn't have any bearing on it, but they'll be...
I think the annual review is adequate.
Yeah.
No cars, whether they be for wholesale, whether they have a dealer's plate on them or not. No dealer's cars in the driveway.
Right. Okay, anything else?
I'd be in favor of less burdensome timeline, maybe every two or three years.
Through the chair, if I may. I believe the applicant may have to go back before Board of Selectmen yearly to renew his license. The condition could be to...
So then it'll be extended to two years, if the...
You could condition a special permit to become null and void if his license isn't reinstated by Board of Selectmen.
So I think what the chair is suggesting is that we tie the review of his home-based business with the review of his automobile dealer's license. Should he be granted that from the selectmen?
Which would be on a yearly basis.
So I think that's a good way to do it. Tie the two together so that he doesn't come before us, just comes before the selectmen, as long as everything's smooth with them, then it continues from our end, too.
And those licenses are renewed every January 1, I believe. So if abutters had issues, they could go to that Board of Selectmen meeting and voice them.
Mr. Shea, is that adequate for you, sir? Is that good for you, that what we've laid for conditions?
As I said, as long as he goes within the...
As I said, as long as he goes within the scope of the town, follows the rules and regulations and inspectional of the town, I don't have a problem.
Okay, well, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Motion to close.
Uh, motion to close that hearing?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have some paperwork to attend to from the previous meeting.
Thinking we priority without prejudice. Bob, are we doing this?
Yeah, we're going to address that right now, too. So before we sign these decisions, we received a letter from attorney Todd Broder of Fletcher Tilton regarding a decision we made last month. They represented NJ Realty Trust in connection with the purchase and development of the parcel of land behind the existing facility at 519 Washington Street. At the hearing on October 18th of 2018, we voted to deny the application. It goes on to say that it is his understanding that we retain the power to reconsider the verbal decision up to the time that a written decision is filed with the town clerk. What he's asking for is us for, to rescind our decision and allow them to withdraw their motion, so they can come before the board again. Do we want to put this on the agenda for next month to discuss it? Because Mr. Aaron is not present, he was one of the, one of the decision makers.
I, um, I would be all for that. It's a, it's a cool, um, move.
Yeah, I can go.
It's a cool move.
Okay.
Yes, and I, and I would be, I would be okay with that.
Okay.
Waiting for Mr. Aaron.
I'd be okay with, with them withdrawing. I mean, I, I think if they come up with a better plan, they should be.
Well, that's the.
Try again, yeah.
So I think that we'll need to make a motion if we want to put this, um, issue on the agenda for next month, and we'll discuss it publicly before we make a decision.
I think that's a good idea.
That's a very good idea.
Okay, so can I just have a quick vote? Do I have a motion on placing the Fletcher Tilton request on next month's hearing?
As stated, I, I move that it be placed on the agenda for next month.
Do I have a second?
As you have stated.[1628.94]